Has started. Okay, I'm used to saying happy Monday, but it is in fact a Tuesday. Welcome everyone. Today is May 27th, 2025. Welcome to the Cumberland Town Council meeting, which we will officially call to order. We are having our meeting on the day after Memorial Day because we decided not to meet on Memorial Day. We were planned to have a 6:00 PM workshop with the town attorney, re-extension of Tiff District 1. Our town attorney is a little bit under the weather, which is pretty serious because she never cancels, so let's all send some well wishes over to Alyssa. First up on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the May 5th, 2025 meeting.
I'll give you a motion.
Okay, we've got a motion. There's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. Next up is the manager's report. Mr. Sturgis, welcome back. We missed you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening all. I've got a presentation tonight for you. Let's see. If I can see what I need to do here. There we go. I can't, I can't see that far. I'm sorry. Up there we go. Thank you. So what I've got here for you tonight is an update on the, there's two bridge projects that are planned and scheduled to be taking place in the town of Cumberland over the next two years. One of them is a significant, well, they're both significant because one is the replacement of the Tuttle Road Bridge, which is down at the end of Tuttle Road as an intersection with Middle Road just beyond there. That is, as you can see, it goes over Route I-295, and it's a double, it's a, it's a bridge that was last redone, I think in 1990. So it's been quite a while since it has been refurbished. So the state is looking to replace that completely. What they're looking to do is, let's see, look at the existing bridge. It was built in 1959, and again, it was redone again in 1889 to 1990. What they're looking to do is complete the replacement of the bridge. They're looking to build a completely new bridge similar to what took place down the street at Bucknham Road in Falmouth. So they're going to build another bridge alongside the old bridge, so the current bridge will stay open during that time period. It's, but there's going to be some significant changes that'll be taking place. The new bridge will have two 11-foot-wide travel lanes, five-foot shoulders, and a six-foot sidewalk. Right now, there isn't much for a sidewalk that's down there, so it's, you know, it's consistent with what the town has done in the past with the extension of sidewalks down Tuttle Road. So this, the state decided that this would be consistent with where they needed to be as well. So that'll be, that'll be a nice improvement. They're also looking to install, and they will do this this summer, is a four-way stop is going to be implemented at Middle Road and Tuttle Road at that intersection. This has been apparently identified as a high-crash location, and Counselor Cope could confirm that, as I know he's been called at, at the end of meetings here at least twice over my tenure to tow cars away from that intersection. So they're looking to have this as a, as a significant increase in the safety of that intersection, and their intent is to keep the four-way stop in place at the completion of the project. This is what we're looking at for the new proposed alignment that they have, and you can see the new bridge is all in, in the blue area, and the old bridge is in the green, green highlighted area. The, the yellow areas here are areas that are going to be impacted during the construction process with some lay-down area, but they're also going to be putting in a significant amount of fill material into there, especially on, on the, the western side of 295, as, bless you, as you, as you may or may not know, there's a significant topo drop-off in there. So they'll be filling that in, but they will be constructing this new bridge, and with, and this is what the new alignment will look like. This right here is the, the current curb cut that goes up onto where the Orchid property was before, so that curb cut will remain eventually once they complete that construction, and then the, the access onto King's Highway and the Route Run access ramp as well will still stay close to where it's at currently, but that is what the new alignment is looking to look like. Traffic, as I said, will be allowed to continue to use the roads in that area, and the intention is to minimally impact during construction, as the new bridge is going to be constructed separately and adjacent to the existing bridge. And so there will be some impacts on I-295 at times, as there were, as you might remember during the Bucknham Road construction, so that may impact over there, and there may be the occasional night work that also they need to do during that period that, you know, to hopefully get that done on time. The Noise Bridge, which is down on, on Longwoods Road, and that's the south of town, so here is Wind Road here, and then Crossroad, as you can see, comes around, around this section, and then the railroad tracks are in this section here. They're looking to replace, there's a currently culvert there that is, well, during high, high rain or high-wet seasons, that area overtops pretty significantly, and part of that is due to the amount runoff, and they're thinking, thinking it is maybe undersized, and that's why the water will back up there and then overtop the road. As you can see in this picture here, this is a good example of it overtopping. So they have had recurring flooding issues there for many years, as well as debris issues as stuff washes downstream, and it'll clog up the, the smaller culvert, and that just makes quite a mess that you have to deal with, and it will result in the road being closed. So what they're looking to do with this project is a precast concrete box culvert in a similar location, but it's going to be wider and longer, so their intent is that it's going to be able to move more water through that area. And they're also increasing the height of the road by a foot to give it more clearance and hopefully reduce flooding in, in the future. Now, this, this one will, actually, a couple of interesting points. Maintenance of traffic, they do have about 3,800 cars per day that go through that section, but there's going to be a full road closure and detour involved there. They're looking to have that closure last for about six weeks during the bulk of the work, and then, and then limited one lane of alternating one-way traffic prior to and after the full closure. And this is part of the workaround that they do have. Wind Road to Falmouth Road will be the designated detour that they'll have. It's roughly 11 miles around, three miles longer than the Route, Route 9 if going from Cumberland to Falmouth. So there is a little bit of a reroute that is, will extend that. Local road detour, however, will be using Wind Road to Cross Road, so you can work around that situation there for, for more of the local traffic. Now, the project schedules, I thought it was the other way around, but after talking with DOT, Tuttle Road Bridge, they're looking to advertise right around now to go out to contractors. Construction they're looking to do, this may be a bit ambitious if they're going out to bid now for summer of 2025. A lot of folks have, have booked that work, so I think you, we may look at this being pushed a little bit later, but this'll, they're looking to have that to go out to bid shortly. They have done, I think, all of their acquisitions for, for either easements or, or purchases that they had to buy on the, on different, on different properties that I know the town has, has some ownership in there that they've, they've paid us a little bit of money for, for some of the area that we have there, as well as for easements. And then the Noise Bridge is going to take several months of construction during '26, and that's looking at a six-week road closure. The Noise Bridge has some environmental issues there, and that's why they need to do that during the summer months, because there are disturbances. It's mostly due to the environmental impact and, and the seasonality of, of what takes place within that spring, or within that stream that, that they have to be aware of with that work. But they're looking to do that with a six-week road closure next summer. And then the, the folks who we have to work with on Tuttle Road is Jerry Dostie, and he's from, you know, they're all from Maine DOT, but this is his connection information. And then Denver Small is the DEP gentleman who we're working with on that. So we're excited about both projects, obviously. The state really helped us out, I think, in a good way with this project, when I know originally, I think we were looking at in excess of $300,000 participation at the town level, and then I think, you know, after they looked at their project, I think we're, we're getting the sidewalk that the town expressed a desire to have, and then, as you recall, this year's budget, the town council approved the expenditure for this project, and I think it was $22,000. So we're going to get a vastly improved and pedestrian-safe bridge over on Tuttle Road, and then hopefully improved life and less flooding over on Longwoods Road. So we're looking forward to the project, and as we get more information and they start to roll out, we'll, we'll definitely do our outreach there with the state and try to get as much info as we can.
Go for it.
Matt, I'm a little concerned about the, the Route 9 culvert. They're proposing a precast box there, and there is a fishery in there that feeds up through there, which is, you know, people have fished, there's a couple of good pools going up there towards up there in Range Road, and I'd like a little bit of confirmation from DOT as to the impact or to make sure that it's better. You know, trench boxes are not fish-friendly, and you know, either drop it down and gravel the bottom of it or something, but I'd like a little bit of detail if they could provide that for us.
Sure, sure. No, I, I know they'll be happy to provide that as well. I know when we did the Spurwink culvert in Cape a few years back, that was what, because we were concerned about, I think they had ale wives would run down in there, and we, like in that project, we ended up doing a, a big box culvert in that because they felt it was, because you could gravel the bottom, so they thought that was going to be better than that. But I'll, I'll reach out to them and say, and ask them for more details on that box culvert, for sure. Counselor Vale, I'm happy to.
Any other thoughts or comments?
We should probably, or I'm sure this is part of Whitney's amazing communication plan, but just communicating out the four-way stop to residents, is that something that will do some runway, like have some runway to do that?
Madam Chair, yes, we'll, we'll, when we know they're starting to work towards deployment, we'll, we'll grab any and all information that we can and try to get that out, out there as soon as possible. Once they, you know, we can put it out there early now and just say, hey, we, you know, be advised, a four-way stop will be coming, and then when they start to deploy that, then we'll say, okay, that four-way stop is now, now there. So we'll definitely try to do our outreach through all, all modes that we can.
And just one question, because we've had some very colorful dialogues in the past about stop sign implementation. That is a decision that the DOT makes autonomously that is not our decision? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Not, not that we're unhappy to hear.
On that road.
People's opinions about stop signs.
There are other roads that we, that the county, that the town has the, the authority on, but on, on this road, it's, it's, it's pretty much their call.
Got it. Thank you very much.
I'll send an email to the neighbors.
Matt, when do we take that, take Route 9 over? Are we? Or is it just going to be Tuttle Road?
Let me get the answer to you on that, Counselor Reed, if that's okay. I, I don't want to, I don't want to miss, I don't want to take ownership prematurely and... But I, I can, I can update the council as well. Thanks for the question.
Denise, did you have something?
Oh, I was just going to say, I'll send my neighbors an email about this four-way stop. That was us.
You've covered the almost a butters.
Yeah.
Awesome sauce. Is there anything else as part of your manager's report, or are you hot to trot?
I'm hot to trot, manager. Thank you very much.
Excellent. All right, so next up, we have public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebel comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Is there anyone else? Oh, come on up, if you wouldn't mind just letting us know, for the folks at home as well, your name and where you live.
I'm Michael Doyle. I live in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I own and write for FalmouthToday.me. Most of what I'm going to say tonight is already up on the website, so if you want to consult that, feel free to do that.
Do you mind speaking into the mic, just so we can make sure people hear?
The microphone is designed for a midget. I'm not a midget. I'm not going to bend over and talk into it. Get a longer mic? No, you don't.
Yeah, I'm going to ask that you're going to be respectful. You're not going to talk to me like that.
I'm being respectful.
That is unacceptable.
I'm respectful. You have a microphone for a midget, not for me!
Like...
Jeez Louise. Get a longer, post on the microphone and be respectful to me for, for a change. Four years ago, I was arrested at a school board meeting violating my First Amendment rights to free speech and freedom of the press. I was dragged to the door by the police officer who put me in AFib. I've never been in AFib before. My pulse was 195 when the ambulance came to get me. I was not allowed to have a drink of water, so when I was in the ambulance, I could not swallow the aspirin they gave me to keep me from having a blood clot. I could not take the nitroglycerin pills that would keep me from having a stroke because I couldn't drink the water. Eventually, the ambulance attendants were so worried about this that he said, I don't care what the cops say, you can have the water right now, because I couldn't swallow or dissolve any of the pills that he was giving me. That's how that night started for me. I was in the emergency room for the next 23 hours at Maine Medical Center with no respect from this school department or this town. None. I had so many blood tests, they turned my arm into a pin cushion. They started taking blood tests from the web of my hand between my finger and my thumb. That went off for 23 hours, because they were afraid I was going to have a heart attack or a stroke because of what happened at the school board meeting. My First Amendment rights were violated. The 14th Amendment right to have equal protection on the law was violated. When your idiot superintendent, Jeff Porter, didn't, when he testified, he couldn't tell who put up the, the bed sheet saying honk if you support the school board. He didn't know who it was. He didn't give anyone permission to do it, and that came out over and over again. He, he used me as an example that I didn't have permission to put my little sign up against Ann Maximovich. Well, he didn't know who put the bed sheet up. His testimony was so weak recently, after being convicted at trial by a jury, my attorney filed such an excellent appeal that the prosecutor failed or refused to file an answer to it, and actually agreed with my attorney and said my conviction should be vacated because of the insufficiency of the testimony of Jeff Porter. And this is just a heads up, because I'm going to file a notice of claim against you people, the town and the school board. I'm going to sue everybody involved in this, anyone who had touched this thing even remotely, police officers, counselors, everyone. And I'll give you one little heads up. A woman had her microphone turned off at a school board meeting in another state. I was watching it on YouTube, and she settled out of court for $3 million. I don't know what impact that would have on your budget, but $3 million for turning off a microphone versus what I was put through for four years? 23 hours in the emergency room, a trial, going through the conviction process, the appeal process, and finding out in the appeal process that the prosecutor didn't think their case was good enough to even answer the appeal. He didn't even file an answer to it. He filed a one-page, one paragraph that said basically, we agree with the attorney for Mr. Doyle and it should be vacated. That's what all this led up to after four years. I will be sending a notice of claim to you, to the school board, and to Mr. Porter, because he is an idiot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come up and chat during public comment?
Good evening. Mike Schwent with your Lands and Conservation Commission. You may recall that last February, and also a year ago last February, we asked you to pass a couple of resolutions. Well, they finally came to fruition. Last Friday at the Viles Arboretum in Augusta, Governor Mills, Commissioner Amanda Beal, and Patty Comier from the Director of the Maine Forest Service spoke at the 2025 Arbor Day Celebration and Awards Ceremony. As a result, Cumberland is now designated a Tree City USA, the only one this year to be added to the list. Soon, we'll be receiving a couple of street signs to put up. We'll have to figure out where to put them. Somebody will need lots of advice on that. I'm sure we'll get that, and that's good. We join our neighbors with this distinction. Yarmouth for 46 years, Portland for 45 years. Yarmouth for 46 years, Portland for 45 years, same thing with South Portland, and Westbrook for 48 years. Thank you for your support.
Congratulations, Mike, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come up during public comment?
Hello, Dave Noonan, Meadow Lane. Not here to insult anybody or anything like that. I actually want to thank the town manager and the assistant town manager. We, it's like we broke ground on Meadow Lane, so just wanted to say thank you publicly, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Awesome, thanks, Dave.
Thanks. We are, is there anyone else that would like to comment during public discussion? You can have a two-minute rebuttal, which is part of our practice and policy. All right. Matt, you've got the adjustment?
Yeah.
All right.
I've got the technology, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
I resent this gentleman saying, I'm up here insulting people. I'm not insulting anybody. If you guys had a normal microphone stand here that I could speak into, that would be excellent. If you don't, this thing is designed for somebody very short, I'm not going to bend over. He wants to bend over and talk to him, fine with me. But don't call me insulting somebody when I stand up for my right against this counselor telling me to be respectful. You should be respectful. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else that would like to speak as part of public discussion? All right, I'm going to close public discussion, and we're going to move on to legislation and policy. As part of legislation and policy is the opportunity for public comment. Per Article 2, Section 7 of the Town Charter, there will be an opportunity for public comment on each item on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. 24-0, sorry, 25-048, to set a public hearing date of June 2nd to consider and act on the Fourth Amendment to the Town of Cumberland Municipal Development Tax Increment Financing District Number One and the Development Program for said district pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 206 of Title 30A of the Maine Revised Statutes as amended. Just a little bit of housekeeping, I think, as we noted earlier in the meeting, we were set to have that workshop at 6:00 PM, so rather, we're going to be hyper-efficient and have, of course, this is what the council wants to do, set the public hearing for our June 2nd meeting, and also have that workshop as part of the June 2nd meeting as well. Did I miss anything there, Mr. Manager?
Spot on, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, before we go into council discussion on this item, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, I will close public discussion and open it up to council discussion. Yep, or manager discussion.
Madam Chair, if you'd like me to, I can give some of the, like, the wider parameters where it comes to, to this TIF extension, if that would be helpful to the council.
Great.
So what this is, the proposal will be is to extend TIF 1, which was created, oh, in 1997, and has been one of the more successful TIFs that I've seen, and, but we're looking to, well, the legislature in its, in its work a few years back allowed towns the ability to extend TIFs as they saw fit for a period of up to 20 years at the, after the expiration of them. However, there are some qualifying standards that are there, as the council knows. You need to set aside 75% of the captured revenue for either housing or, sorry, affordable housing, or for transit, or transit-related projects. Now, there is some work out there to take it from the, from affordable housing or transit to and/or at some point to have a combination, so there's some work on that at the legislative level that we'll continue to monitor, and so there may be the ability to use that in the future for both areas of that. So we want to have that wording in there. But what this is looking to do is to extend TIF 1 for 20 years, and then that shows the, under the qualifying standards of that 75-25 savings. So in the, in the packet relating to the extension of TIF, TIF 1, it explains the different reasons behind, or the area that is to be, is to be covered within the TIF, the reasons for capturing that revenue, the potential projects that may, that revenue may be used for, as well as, you know, if, the ability to say, you know, what the goals are for having that TIF, TIF in place. And it also shows later in the document the amount of revenues that the town shall anticipate over that 20-year period, and that's on, oh, gosh, page 18 of the document, and it shows the, what the town should anticipate from the 25% side of it and the 75% side of it. So based on the current existing conditions of value within the TIF district over that 20-year period, the total amount that is to be captured is roughly about $15, about $15 million, with an annual average of about $692,000. Now, that 75% number that it's looking, that is captured and can be used for either affordable housing or for, or for transit is estimated to be about $9.8 million, and then the 25% remaining amount would be the difference between, between the overall captured amount. So it could be, you know, it will allow the town a significant amount of latitude to accomplish its affordable housing goals or transit goals that may develop over the course of that 20 years. Also, it, there are other benefits to this, as well as, as the council may recall, and it's from the shift in taxes. So there are savings as well that the town will see, and overall, so on the education side of it, there are three, really, three areas that the, that the town benefits from on the tax shift. The first one would be on education shift, or the funds that the town in, effectively MSAD 51 receives, as well as, you know, by capturing that value and, and basically not having it thrown into the mix of how they determine that cost share, sorry, the, the distribution of what they call ED 279, or General Purpose Aid Education Funds. Secondly, there's a revenue shift that takes, revenue sharing shift that takes place, so by capturing that value, it also will increase the amount of revenue sharing that the town receives, because it takes that value out of the equation as well from the state valuation side. And then thirdly, there's a, there's a county tax shift, meaning that by capturing that value and taking it off the, off our state valuation, our county taxes are less because of that. So over the course of the 20-year extension, the town is looking to save about 5.8, almost $5.9 million on the education shift, so that would be an additional funds that, that, that would come to the district that wouldn't come otherwise if that value wasn't captured. On the revenue sharing side of it, the town should benefit to roughly just under $600,000, about $561,000 on that side of it, and then avoiding tax shift with the county taxes, that, over that 20-year period, the town should see a savings of about $770, almost $800,000 during that time period. So that, by having those out of the equation, that directly impacts the tax rate on an annual basis. So, you know, if you look at it from the county side, it'd be roughly about $35,000 a year that wouldn't, that the taxpayers of the town wouldn't have to pay. And then on the revenue sharing, it's about $25,000 a year that, on average, that they'll see. And then, and then on the education side of it, it's roughly $265,000 that, that the district would benefit by. So there are compelling reasons mathematically to do that, and that's basically looking at it from the current known amounts that you have that's been captured. There may be future investments that take place, where, where people may want to invest within that TIF district, and there would be future, future revenue that would come from, you know, future development that would take place that could capture. So if, you know, if one of the larger lots had additional expansion, or someone wanted to come in and build another commercial building along Route 1 in that section north, that value would be captured as well. So overall, I think this is a great package that Alyssa's put together, and she'll explain this a lot, a lot more successfully than I, than I will, because she's just a wizard when it comes to this. But, but I just wanted to set some of the parameters, at least for council to have an understanding as to what some of the impacts will be going forward and the reasons behind doing that. But it does allow the town a significant amount of financial flexibility when it comes to wanting to accomplish many of its goals, either on a straight, a straight municipal budgetary approach, or as well as affordable housing or transit goals that may, may exist in the future.
Great.
Two questions.
Go for it.
One, does it matter that 25-056 is an agenda item after this, like from, more so because the, we haven't officially moved the meeting yet, does that matter if those are out of order? You see what I'm saying? Because we're setting a public hearing date for a meeting that isn't currently scheduled or confirmed. And then...
I think you'll be okay, as long as you take care of, as long as you make sure it happens this evening in the, at the same agenda.
Okay.
I think you're okay there.
And then, I think we were originally doing this under the assumption that we were meeting with Alyssa tonight, so I just would be curious if everyone would feel comfortable having that public hearing date coinciding with the same night we have a workshop, because I don't want it to be like, do people need more time to think about it after? Go ahead, sorry.
Can I request that we make it start at 5:00 and have like a full-on two-hour, but potentially finish early workshop? Because an hour isn't really ever enough time to ask questions about this and really discuss it, in my opinion, unless we're really doing some hardcore research on our own until then, which I will, but, you know, I know we're busy. So that would be my request, since it is coinciding on the same night, is potentially having that a little more time.
I think that would be reasonable, but we would just need to check with the town attorney to see if she's available, of course.
Yep.
Any other things to...
Bob, yep.
I, I think that the two-hour window is, is a great idea. There is no obligation on the council's part to not table this, our next meeting if, if we're uncomfortable with it. I think that, you know, that, that's certainly an option for us. The other thing I'd point out is the valuation, state aid to education is based on valuation also, so there is that, is an added benefit that I don't think you brought out, that, you know, our, our total valuation is lowered, and the calculation is, by the state is affected by that. Right?
Andrew.
Matt, I know that we'll get into this more with Alyssa, but just wanted for people to sort of percolate on, there's also something in here, I believe, about our ability to ramp up or ramp down the amount that we capture, so we're not, the way it's, it's written in here, we're not setting ourselves up to have to capture 75% that goes towards affordable housing currently, or transit, hopefully, and/or. But we could, year to year, depending on the requirements that we see of projects coming up, move that up, move it down, and all, it's just of what we decide to capture, 75% of that has to go to one of the two things, but it doesn't need to be based on the value of the taxes coming in that year, correct?
You are correct, Councilman Goode, thank you for that as well. It's, yeah, this, that is one of the, one of the elements of the amendment of this, of this TIF as well, is the ability to throttle it up or down in the future. So if you, if you find in the future that there isn't the need at that time to, to capture all of that value, or you may need to use revenue from that district onto the, onto the larger, larger question of the town budget, you can throttle it up or down as, as needed. So that's an item that's currently not on, in the, in TIF 1, and it's an element that's going to be added at this point. So that gives the town an additional level of flexibility, and then, but yeah, any revenue that you do capture still has to maintain that 75-25 split that takes place. So if you, but if you throttle it down to half, half the value of that district captured for, for, for that year or a couple of years, then it just have, you know, it'd be 75% of half, so.
Yep. There are a few pieces in here that are blank, probably because we don't have to fill it out, we don't have answers, but the job creation goals being blank, I'm curious, because I know there isn't a whole lot of developable, developable area left, but one thing that stood out to me in here was the ability to fund an economic development staff or a staff person, and I'm curious, is that something that the town has really considered kind of pursuing? Because I feel like it would be super valuable, and if that's something that we were planning on doing anyways, whether that should be stated in the application for reasons, but someone who can actually stimulate economic development, especially in West Cumberland, it mentions marketing the town as a business center in that area, commercial center, having a dedicated person on staff whose entire purpose is to bring commercial development to Cumberland, I think it'd be really valuable. So, and again, I don't know if this is the right conversation for that, or if we should save it for the workshop, but kind of, it's part of this, so if we are extending, okay, why? I get the, you know, your sheltering value and everything, and we can ramp it up and down, which is great, it's just, are we going to ramp it up and down? Like, are we going to, every budget year, go into it and see, like, really look at TIF 1 and be like, yeah, this year we're going to do 50-50, like, stuff like that? So I understand everything that's available, I just want to make sure that we're using it in the future, and kind of keeping open on that and really looking at it year to year, and how it works best for what we're dealing with, because, you know, when the things start hitting us in a couple of years, maybe we need to only capture half and then put more into, like, senior assistants or something like that, like, I don't know. Just have it there for other things that might not be regular budget items, but might require, like, some relief to certain community members.
Like a school bond.
Right. I'm talking about that, and then, you know, the building project and all that stuff, so, yeah, that's what you're talking about, but...
One thing that we have sort of loosely talked about at the comprehensive plan a little bit is that idea of an economic development director, and that's, I think, something that will be included as we start to do the subcommittee work on, and Bob and I are both on the Economic Development Subcommittee, so we will certainly make sure to kind of bring that into the fray, because I think there is a lot of sentiment to look at strategic growth rate and developing that to be a great area of town.
Yeah. One more thing, because Andrew didn't catch it.
I want you to have a word.
Page eight, page eight, anticipated revenues, number six, there is a typo.
Wow, Andrew, you really...
There's an extra i in the front of improvements.
You're falling off.
Poor Andrew.
That's my contribution. What's that?
Oh, I see it, yep. We shall, we shall get that edited, Counselor Thorson.
There were a couple others, but, so...
Services provided, which is what you're talking about, you know, it can be done, so...
Cool. So is there any other discussion on this, or are we comfortable to set a public hearing date with the, and I don't think it specifies the number of hours in the motion, but knowing that we would like to do two hours, if there was a motion on the floor, I would take one. I'll give you a motion. I move to set a public hearing date of June 2nd to consider and act on the proposed Fourth Amendment to the Town of Cumberland Municipal Tax Development, Cumberland Municipal Development Tax Increment Financing District Number One and the Development Program for said district pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 206 of Title 30A of the Maine Revised Statutes as amended.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Vale?
This has been a topic of discussion for, for well over a year, it might be close to two years. I think if we look at the past use of TIF funds, why the state created it, the advantages to put ourselves in a position to utilize this money far exceeds the not doing it. I don't know if I get that all the words right, but the, my point is that this is a tool that the town needs to carry through with. It's been discussed multiple times, and I know with, with new councils here, a lot of what we're going to be discussing at our meeting is, is reemphasizing that, but it's, it's, it's a great tool for the town to have, and it provides us with economic opportunities that we wouldn't otherwise have. Fully support the motion.
Any other council discussion? Okay, call for a vote? All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Okay. Next up, 25-049, to accept a Community Resilience Partnership Community Action Grant for $75,000. The LCC has done it again. This is a pretty awesome-looking grant, we've got Mr. Schwint here, but including solar panels on the West Cumberland Fire Station, as well as, I think, heating energy efficiency at the library. Mr. Schwint, what can you tell us, sir?
Madam Chairman, as you noticed, as you noted, got another award, $75,000 for our Community Resilience Partnership Community Action Grant, $55,000 for the Cumberland Fire Station, which for, for a solar array, energy audit, and two EV chargers, $15,000 for the library for a couple of heat pumps, and then also bringing in another $1,000 from energy efficiency, or Efficiency Main, and the last $5,000 would go to putting, capturing water for the, our community garden over there, or community orchard. As you know, we don't have any water, no wells, and so if we can do that and capture the water and distribute it around to the trees, we all win on that one. So, we ask for your acceptance of this funds, and I would also note that if you accept this tonight, that will bring the funds and resources that the LCC has accumulated from outside sources in the last four or five years to 168,000 bucks. So, thank you.
Thank you, that is a sizable chunk of change and a lot of really great work. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Schwint, and we will close public comment on that. Council discussion.
Can I ask a question, please? Do we have a sense of any like collateral costs that will come with like receiving the grant in the sense of like, if we receive this, is there any spend or commitment from the town that we should be anticipating?
You mean like a match?
Yeah.
It's a no-match, I believe.
Nope, no-match.
No-match, okay. So, it covers costs.
Yep.
Amazing, thank you.
Please.
So, I want to preface this by saying I think this is fantastic and fully in support of accepting the money and all that. I do just more of a process thing, I'm going to raise again, I think that we should be having town staff signing these things, especially when it says that, you know, the undersigned is authorized to enter contractual obligations on behalf of the above-named organization. I think the LCC has been doing fantastic work, but I'd rather have a paid staff member put in pen to paper for that, for these. And then, a question that might be, Mike, you might be the one to be able to answer this, for the Level 2 chargers, are those going to be just straight-up Level 2, or are they going to, like, just like what I have at home kind of thing, or is it going to be a pay-for Level 2 setup?
I can't answer that part, Madam Chairman, whether or not it's going to be a pay-for, that's to be worked out yet. If I could back up just a little bit here.
Please.
The application was signed by Denny, and it was consistent with the instructions we had and the, and the guidance we had from the former town manager. We signed them, and this is not the first one, so if you want to change the ground rules, that's fine, but please, we followed the ground rules all the way along here. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Bob, please.
Mike, the portion of money or portion of funds for the solar on, on the West Cumberland Fire Station, is that a dedicated piece of the, of the funding?
Yes, sir, it is, it's, if you look in the application, I think it's about page 11 or 12, you'll see the letter signed by the fire chief supporting that particular activity. We expect that, once that's put in place, it'll essentially take care of the needs of the fire station, pretty close to it.
I guess my, my, my question or concern is whether that can be, that funds can be allocated to put the panels on our existing solar field instead of on the building up there.
Madam Chairman, Council Vale, I guess if I were running the grant myself, I would go back to the granting agency and say, look, we're going to continue, we're going to get this here, but we want to put it on a different place. It is, it could be considered a major shift in what the, the outcome was going to be, but net bottom line, you'd still have the same generating capacity, so just to keep it clean, I'd go back to the granting agency and try to clarify it with them.
I'm not sure I fully understood that.
I, I think that he's kind of saying that if we go back to, like, that's not a question for, that would be a question for the Department of Energy, or, sorry, the main people that are giving the grant at the state level versus, I don't think we could just make a switcheroo and say we want to put this with our existing solar field when the funds were allocated as per the application to be like this specific, right? That would probably be like a, kind of a, an illegal switcheroo that kind of violate the terms of the agreement, I would think, Matt, is that your understanding?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a significant change, Council Vale, to what the application was made to, to say how it's going to be deployed, so they may say, you know, why don't you just scratch the 55K and apply again for the future? They'd probably put that money back in the fund and say you have to reapply, would be my, would be my hot take on that.
All right.
Just because it's enough, it's enough of a change, it's really a change from what the original grant application had said, so. I think they'd probably, I think they'd probably say, we'll take the 55 grand back and you can apply next year.
Madam Chairman, we have had success working with the granting agencies to have them change things. For example, just last week, you may recall, we were having spraying done, invasive mitigation in three different areas. We couldn't get the work done in Twin Brook, so we had 4,500 bucks on, on the line at that one, we were going to lose it. We worked with the granting agency, we gave them expenditures that we had incurred for Ryan's and Town Forest, and asked them to move it all together as a single lump sum, and so we did not lose the 4,500 dollars. The town should be expecting a check if they haven't gotten it ready for 16,900 bucks, and it's clean because we did work with the granting agencies. And having been a federal auditor myself, when you, when you take a, a major shift in what the grant funds are supposed to do, it's very easy to get the question, the cost questioned, now just as soon as I do that, without double checking, that's all.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I get a motion when the council, council is ready.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd love to hear a motion.
Take the money.
Madam Chair, I move to accept a Community Resilience Partnership Community Action Grant for $75,000.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Matt, would you mind checking with Alyssa to see if like, about, kind of to Andrew's point about liability of other people signing who aren't town employees? I know at the place I work at, it's, you have to be a certain level to be able to sign stuff, so just, just as follow-up on that, and that's all.
We'll do, Council Douglas.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on the motion? Call for a vote, all those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, thank you, Mike, and thank you to Denny as well.
Good job, Mike, keep the grants coming.
Really great work. Okay, next up, 25-050, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on a medical marijuana registered caregiver license renewal for Evergreen Cannabis Co., Andrew Petten Gill located at 222 Gray Road. Okay. Before we get into council discussion, I will just note that both Chief Fromzy and Chief Small, as well as Bill Longley, our code enforcement officer, do not have any concerns with the renewal of this. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Okay, I'll close public comment and open it up for council discussion on this agenda item. Mr. Eads?
Madam Chair, you're probably going to guess where I'm going with this, but we've got four of these in a row, the fire chief, police chief, Bill Longley's signed off on all of them, and if it is the council's will, I'd be willing to make a motion to incorporate all four.
I'm just wondering if Councilor McGoon has any snark about the handwritten applications and the penmanship before we go down that road?
I had smacked better than my penmanship, so. It's actually legible, which I appreciate.
Personally, I think that's a great idea, and especially since there are no concerns and these are all renewals. Is there any other council feeling on that?
Do we want to offer public comment for the remaining ones?
Yeah, would anyone from the public like to comment on any of those items? Come on up!
Hello, Council.
Hello.
I am at 210 Gray Road.
I remember you.
The old Kremdel Krem, how have you been? Have you had a good holiday? Yeah, we're also renewing, so I just wanted to come out and show face and say hello and whatnot. Spoke to Bill, he did our inspection, I spoke to Jennifer down here, I think it's, you know, I just saw you guys a couple of months ago, so, you know, if you had any questions, shoot them at me, please, but otherwise, just, that's all.
Can you please pronounce your last name so Mike doesn't butcher it, please?
A bear, a bear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
That would definitely be a tough one for you, Mike.
Is it a go?
Yeah, I will close public comment on it and open it up to council, council, councilness.
No comment.
Let's do it. All right, Mike, floor is yours.
Bob's gonna-
I can make a, I can make my comment later, but I'm, I'm making now, just as easy. I understand the legalities here and the, this is a pro forma exercise for us, but at the end of the day, if I was selling aspirin out of my back of my car, somebody would come down and want to know what my medical profession wears and my licensing and that sort of thing, and so my, really my beef is with the state, this is unregulated in large part when we use the word medical, and to my mind's eye, the state has failed to properly license medical professionals in the dispensary of a product that is called medical marijuana. So, in, in principle, I, I find, I have a problem with this, it's the legalities beside, I'm forced to vote for it, but, you know, it's, I remain to this day uncomfortable with the whole process.
If it makes you feel any better, medical cards require an interview with usually a nurse practitioner, who-
I'll just leave it there.
If you travel Route 4 from Turner down through Lewis and Auburn, you can get a card in 30 minutes, they advertise it right there, so that's-
Go for it, Mr. Cop.
Hopefully they don't sell this out of food trucks.
Ron!
Just a torment bomb.
Giving it all to Bob tonight.
All right, there we go.
Goodness gracious. Wow.
I've been, I've been duly put in my place.
But done by a good friend, so it's all good. All right, I, I think you're up for it, Mr. Eads.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move to approve item 25-50, 25-51, 25-52, 25-53. I move on item, I move to approve the medical marijuana registered caregiver license renewal for Evergreen Cannabis Company, Andrew Petten Gill located at 222 Gray Road. Evergreen Cannabis Company, Kristen Petten Gill, located at 93 Lower Methodist Road. SSJA LLC, Jacob Atkinson, located at 212 Gray Road. And for Samuel Hebert, located at 210 Gray Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this motion? Good. All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, thank you, Mr. A Bear.
Where's your shirt from? Where's your shirt from?
From the internet, actually.
Love that.
Is it Hebert, A Bear?
A Bear.
And where you are in Maine. I mean, if you're in the St. John Valley, it's pronounced totally different than it is down here, so.
Is it Woolwich or Woolwich? Just wondering. Congratulations on your renewal. All right, next up, 25-054, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on a liquor license application for Wander Food and Events LLC. As everyone may recall, we approved, we approved a special entertainment license at Wander as well as food trucks at Wander as per their overlay contract zone. This is a separate liquor license for the restaurant, it sounds like Alex may have a new dance partner for operating the restaurant. Did I get anything wrong there, Mr. Sturgis, keep me honest?
Right on the money, Madam Chair, thank you.
Happens once a year. Would anyone from the public like to comment on this? Okay, I'll close public discussion and move to council, council discussion. Yes, please, Ron.
Just a question, it says in the motion, I move to approve a liquor license application for Wander Foods and Events LLC. Who was Events LLC is just a question, I guess.
The whole name?
Is, is it one and, one and the same, or is it two separate entities?
It's, it's all, all together.
It is all-
Wander Food and Events.
Okay, all right, that was just a question, so.
Which is, I think if we're getting to it, separate from Alex's. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I'll just say, I would just note, if you're filling out a liquor license for the state, don't use an ampersand, actually write out "and",
I know, right?
Because it pops up a bunch of gobbledygook.
Yeah, the application was converted to a wall of garbage, got it.
That's my snarky comment about-
I just want, I just found, found out tonight that one of the people that's going to run this also has a business, two businesses in the forks. Ron, I'm sure you've been to them, they, they run a first-class operation, they know the food business, they know their neighbors, they, they expanded, Joe Christopher is a top-notch guy, he's expanded down here with $3 Deweys and Saltwater Grill and about, he's, he will soon be the restaurant king of Maine if he isn't close to already, but he's doing it because he knows what he's doing and he knows what, what the local municipalities expect out of him, so.
Sounds like we're lucky to have him.
Yeah.
And the food should be excellent, so.
Menu looks pretty good.
Yeah, the menu did look really good.
Okay, so apart from the menu, which is not what we're tasked with doing tonight, people.
Madam Chair, I'll give you a motion.
Let's hear it.
I move to approve a liquor license application for Wander Foods and Events LLC.
I'll give you a second. All right, is there any discussion on the motion? All right, call for a vote. Unanimous, Brenda. Moving right along, 25-055- Moving right along, 25-055, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on a liquor license renewal for the Thirsty Traveler LLC. Again, this is a renewal, and just wanted to kind of point out, and again, Mr. Sturgis, feel free to keep me honest on this, but the reason for this is because this particular truck that, um, this boozy truck is a resident of Cumberland and therefore needs a liquor permit to house their truck even at their own residence, right? Is that right?
That's correct, because this is the home of operations, so that's why it needs to be approved in the town of which it's, uh, let's say domiciled.
Even though they are a mobile vendor?
Mobile vendor, but you need to have that, need to have a license from the town you're in.
Before we talk to our biggest fan of food trucks, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this particular agenda item? All right, we will close public comment on that and open it up for a healthy discussion. Please.
Matt, is there any requirement that the owner of this, the requested licensee, own the property with his kep or they can rent?
You can rent, yeah, it's fine, Counselor Eads.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
That's a great question. Other council discussion.
Yes.
Please.
So, the owner of this food truck or liquor truck is a resident of the Cumberland and the vehicle resides at his home, does that give him license to operate any place in the town, or is it a specific location only that we are authorizing here?
Counselor Vail, if I understand your question correctly, uh...
He's not gonna show up for the ball field and sell beer?
Yeah, it'd be more if, like, say if you wanted to have an event at your house, you could hire this person to come to your house and set up his, his mobile vendor there, versus you can't just show up at, say, Twinbrook and set up and start, and start operating, you'd have to be, in a sense, invited or hired by someone to do that event, or if you had, you know, it would depend, but you can't just set up wherever you'd like to, it's generally you'd get hired to set up that event.
Just a little curious, I guess, as to setting up in a tight neighborhood and you're parked on the street or in the driveway and you're operating a business, so I'd like a little bit more clarity as to what, where.
It'd be similar to hiring a food truck for, you know, for an event at your house, it's about the same, just a different product that they're selling there versus, or it could be, you could hire them, you know, in the past, people have hired, you know, I'm trying to think, that the grilled cheese food truck, uh, to come to the house for a party for their kids, or, uh, you know, different food trucks, people can hire that to come to their house for a party or wedding reception, or anything along those types of lines, versus...
So, the holder of the license is obligated to ensure that only those over twenty-one?
Oh, God, yeah, yeah, I mean, all those same liquor license laws apply, you know, they could, but if this person wanted to, say, go to Thompson's Point for a concert, they could, but they operate out of their location here in Cumberland, because that's where they live, but they could go to, you know, Thompson's Point or someplace in Portland that might hire them for events, or things along those lines, but yeah, everything else, all the other, all the liquor laws apply to that person just as they would if you had a bar or tavern.
Sure, follow-up question, because now I'm curious, so during Twed's Brook, I'm guessing the town hired those food trucks?
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, is it a law or whatever somewhere that, basically, if I'm hanging out at Twinbrook, this isn't my private property, so I cannot hire the food truck or to hang out there, is it the town has to do that since it's public property, or how does that work exactly?
Yeah, you have to have the property owner's permission to be set up there, so, um, yeah, so the folks who've come in the past for Twed's Brook, they, you know, the parks or the recreation department has invited, you know, a couple of different vendors to come and to do that there.
Cool, just clarifying that.
And I think that we, I mean, because we had Rachel's at the Bicentennial, and we went through a lot of hoops to be able to make that legally happen, right? And it was, like, wildly regulated and very, very well done and safely done, but it was because it was like the town event of, right? And went with a vendor that they trust and know very well.
Just curious, because sort of like, oh, maybe Bob's line of reasoning is like, if we're gonna hang out at Twinbrook and then we're gonna bring the liquor truck over and there's gonna be a bunch of drunk people at Twinbrook, it's like, is that illegal because you're basically on public property with any sort of truck, really, and it's not yours, so. I guess it's the same regardless of there being alcohol, like, you're on public property, you need permission from the town.
Yeah, in that event, you'd need to have at least four council members who thought it was a good idea.
Fun, good deal. Please.
So, the technicality for me is, we are licensing a, we're rubber stamping the, or adding to the state's application, state licenses, this operation may never hold a, an event in the town of Cumberland, this is a license that he takes with him, and maybe he might have an event in Cumberland.
Yeah, could, I mean, could, someone could get married and have an event at their house and hire this, you know, hire the Thirsty Traveler to provide beverages at their, at their party, or may never do business in town, but might go to other towns, but you have to, but again, the state license says, you know, it's gonna be at the location that you're operating out of, and then, but he's, you know, on the road, basically, other times, but you have to have, you have to have it housed someplace.
Uh, Mr. Cop?
If Thirsty Travelers was doing a wedding in Yamouth, would he have to have this same permit in Yamouth?
No, just, yeah, it's just the license here.
He's covered by, and what is the fee for this license in Cumberland? Do you know, it doesn't say, I mean, I'm just curious.
I think it's... I think it's like fifty dollars.
That's it?
Seems like it should be four times that, but...
The other fee was like a thousand in one of these other applications, but I know it's a different use.
I will say, in my limited knowledge of events, that usually whoever this person is has to hold insurance and then also the, um, the venue at which they're at has to hold insurance, so there's like some other checks and balances that happen.
Like any business, so.
Yeah, regulation perspective.
I'm not concerned about the fee, I just was curious, that's all, so. But it does seem rather cheap.
Yes, I mean, I think if we wanted to maybe revisit fee structures, right, for some of these, it would be a good thing, but maybe not for this particular evening, because the person has done all of their i's and crossed their t's and we don't have any, um, you know, we granted this last year as well, and it looks like, according to the police chief, fire chief, and code enforcement officer, there are no concerns, which is pretty clean bill of health, in my opinion, anyway.
Madam Chair, to Counselor Cop's question, I was just, I just grabbed an old, the state really is the one who takes in the money, um, you know, they've got different classes of what they have for licenses that they have to pay, so it ranges from nine hundred for a Class One to eleven hundred for a Class One A to, you know, as little as two hundred and twenty dollars for if you want to sell beer or malt liquor only, so, that's, they have on their nice application, "Make your checks payable to the treasurer of the state of Maine," so.
So, Matt, there's probably no way that, regardless of whether it was, you know, traveling or not, we would see any income from any state liquor license?
No.
There's no way that we could, sort of...
Vicariously through revenue sharing is probably where they would, you know, ultimately where it would trickle down through.
Maybe excise tax for the truck.
I was gonna say.
That as well. The excise is ours.
All right.
Give you a motion, if you'd like, Madam Chair.
Please, I would love one.
I move to approve the liquor license renewal for Thirsty Turf Travelers LLC, excuse me, no turf, Thirsty Travelers LLC.
There a second?
I'll give you a second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
No.
All those in favor?
One against.
Oh, all those against, one, uh, motion carries. Brenda, we hear you, even if we don't see you. Okay, uh, next up, uh, 25-056, to move the town council meetings in June from June ninth and twenty-third to June second and sixteenth. There is going to be an election here on our evening of regularly scheduled, uh, councilness, just to use that verb again, or adjective again, um, and on the sixteenth, it's to, swear in newly elected town councilors. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this schedule change or adjustment? Okay, I will close public comment, any council discussion? Okay.
Do we have much of an agenda next week?
Tiff one.
Yes, the Tiff extension, I have, at this point, Toby Young and Nick are coming from Valhalla to present, and we may have, there'll be, we'll have a few items.
Are they gonna talk about irrigation?
Maybe, mostly general operations update as to talk about...
Sorry, I'm interested in soil moisture meters.
It's cool!
I don't want to do a big reveal, that'd be a spoiler alert.
Wow!
Just trying to dry things up a little bit here.
Yeah, right now, water's not been a problem.
Yeah, right, totally. Would love a motion if...
I'll give you a motion. I move to hold the town council meetings in June from June ninth and twenty-third to June second and sixteenth.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second, oh, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. All right, uh, let's move on to new business, Mr. Eads, what have you have for us, sir?
Couple, couple things. North Yamouth, just, I was riding and working the other day, and I heard on the news that North Yamouth extended their business hours for the one restaurant in North Yamouth Village. As you know, it's, the restaurant there's turned over, I think, four times in the last ten years, but they extended it by one hour, it's a novel thought. I want my condolences to the Dagel family. Jack Dagel grew up on, excuse me, he lived on Middle Road, I had four kids come through the school system, Jack was probably the last real, um, local banker, he ran Northern Bank and then Casco Bank, um, very involved with this community, and he passed away at ninety-two the other day, some my condolences to his family, and last but not least, I just want to follow up with that text message I sent you yesterday, Tig. I was really impressed, both my wife and I thoroughly enjoyed yesterday. I went up early on Main Street yesterday morning, just to clear, I want to get the campaign signs away from there, and sure enough, Matt, the fire chief, the assistant town manager were all there, working early, getting everything set up, and it went up flawless. If you, um, we've grown a lot as a town since Bob and Ronnie and I grew up here, but if you want to know what small town was yesterday, you attended the parade, and it was just so impressive, and Tig, you spoke from the heart, it was very moving, um, you know, my father-in-law, my father, my son, all of them serve us, so this is very personal to me, and what you did was wonderful. And last but not least, I want to thank Denise and Bob for your service and recognize it, I really, it doesn't go unnoticed, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Magoon?
I just have a few quick updates from the Twinbrook Master Plan. Peapingham will be presenting it to the school board shortly on the plans for the Greeley roadside, because the school has a lease on that area and sort of what the thought process is, there is also a school board rep on the Twinbrook Planning, Master Planning Committee and all, and then other committees are right now gathering information and documents, try to go and find the, you know, the history of it and what the policies are, reviewing the current policies and what needs to change going forward. And then the West Cumberland basketball courts were hopefully going to be resurfaced in the next few weeks, but Mother Nature had other plans, so that's pushed back a bit, but because of the company is just behind schedule, but that is in the works to get those resurfaced, which is much needed, and then hopefully, maybe we can work on some improved hoops over there, more better backboards, maybe?
Looking at that, as well as interesting lines that'll be painted on that court for basketball, as well as this new sport called pickleball.
Yes!
The kids are all into it.
The kids, yeah, it's for the kids.
The kids.
Kids at heart, at least, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
One thing I just want to bring up for the group for some sort of discussion at some point in time is the U20-1 Gray Road lot across from Cop Motors that is currently for sale, and whether that is something we, as a community, would like to pursue so that we can control what goes in there, um, I don't know if that's a discussion or how the process would work for something like that, but I think it should be something we at least discuss, so, that's all for me.
When did that come on the market?
It's been on the market for seventy-five days.
Okay. Mr. Vale?
Memorial Day is out. A little dry.
Dry throat?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Memorial Day has always been a, um, an important, an important event for me, and not from my personal experience, um, you know, I served in the Navy and, you know, I did a couple of years there, I went to Vietnam and, you know, it was a grand tour, if you will, but, uh, the family history that precedes me, uh, my mother's, my grandmother's uncle was killed in Gettysburg. My father's uncle, great, father's uncle was gassed in World War One, mustard gas, he did survive. My, my own uncle was shot down, uh, in World War Two, so the, the history that precedes me has always been meaningful to me, and certainly the support from the community yesterday, it can be a little overwhelming, uh, but I don't, you know, with the events of the, of the day and the, um, what I perceive as the direction of our country, it's so important for us to acknowledge those that have gone before, and so I guess just thank the community for their coming out yesterday, it was great.
Well said, Bob.
Well said, Bob. Thank you for your service. Denise?
Um, let's see, what do I have? This Friday, at the Orchard, we're gonna have some fourth graders coming on a walking field trip to scatter some seeds around, so that'll be cool, I'll probably be there, and it's not just because my son will be there. So, if anyone wants to show up, that'll be around nine-thirty to ten-thirty-ish, Friday at the Orchard. Also, um, before this meeting, I didn't think I'd have time because of the workshop, but since it was canceled, I was able to go see the fourth graders perform at the GCA, it was super cute, Mr. Saunders is awesome, the kids sang a handful of songs. The kids sang a handful of songs about friendship and just being kind to one another, they recited some original poetry, so it was really great. It, it wasn't very long, um, kind of in and out, but it was kinda really, it was special, like, all the fourth graders up there on stage singing together, it was really cute. Um, so I appreciated that the school put that on and that the kids were able to participate in that. My son, who's usually really anti-public events or getting up on stage or whatever, is actually really excited about it, so, um, that says something. If, you know, shy kids are feeling comfortable enough to go up on stage and sing in front of a bunch of people, um, I think we're doing something right. So, thank you, teachers, and thank you, school, for making our kids feel comfortable. Um, what else? Um, curious if we're kind of holding off on ordinance committee meetings until the election's over, if we can continue those. Um, I think it'd be worth kinda getting into the ADU thing a bit, um, and not necessarily anything that needs to wait, I think, for the comp plan, um, as far as looking at our ordinances and seeing what we could do, um, above and beyond the minimum state standards on that to try to make it easier for people. I know we've talked about lot splitting, making that easier, um, in the past, especially because of lot minimums, it's kind of prohibitive, so checking that out additionally. Also, don't know if we wanna wait till comp plan for that, but looking at our allowed uses in West Cumberland for that district, um, if we don't want, you know, certain types of businesses, there's nothing you can do about that unless you have it in ordinance, so. Um, yeah, there's some stuff that we could probably take a look at, so I'm up for a meeting, if you guys wanna have one at some point, so that's all I have.
Mr. Cop?
I'll donate my twenty dollars to the food pantry, as always, and I would like to make a comment. Memorial Day's always been a very special day in the town of Cumberland. I can remember when I was a little kid, my sister and I used to march in the parade, I mean, and we'd always go down, my sister would go down and pick lilacs beside the road somewhere. It's just, it makes you feel proud of the community that you live in, it's just a good, good, good hathering, and it's just always been a great event, and finally, the weather cooperated a little bit, so, and that's all I have.
You wanna make a comment about the Maloney family yesterday?
And Bob Maloney, for as long as I can remember, has been marching in that parade, and the guy refuses to ride in a golf cart. He is stickler that he is gonna walk, and he leads the way every year, I mean, he's just phenomenal guy, I mean, so, but, uh,
There was three gen- three generations there.
Yeah, 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 there's three generations there, and I'm, I mean, I think you're gonna see Bob for years to come. And that's all I have.
Speeches like that, I hope so. Um, yeah, I, I echo Bob, Mike, uh, and Ron, it was a beautiful, beautiful day. Um, my husband, uh, is descended from Holocaust survivors, so we have an everyday appreciation, um, especially for, uh, those that went into World War Two, um, because he literally wouldn't be here if it wasn't for all of them, and not that it's about us, it is not, but, um, uh, it's just something that was, it's always on my mind, and just kind of that appreciation, um, uh, but for everyone who has served and, uh, makes that impact on all of the families, um, and all the loved ones and all the friends, um.
Uh, I don't have anything else unless anyone else has anything else, except for we have executive session, so I think we would need to make a motion to, uh, move into executive session and ask you, beautiful people that are sitting in the, uh, uh, the audience tonight, to head on home, because executive session means you can't be here, um, but we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, do you think we might need a motion to-
Madam Chair, I'll give you a motion. "I move to recess to executive session pursuant to Title I MRSA four oh five six C, reference acquisition of real property."
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Unanimous, Brenda.